And you're on.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. We have already started the meeting in open session before going into executive sessions. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the Emergency Open Meeting Law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as it is practical to. Members of the public who wish.
Nearly seventy percent of commercial viewers.
Somebody needs to turn their microphone off, please. Thank you. Members of the public who wish to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link on the GMRSD website. It can be found under School Committee Notices and Agendas for Upcoming Meetings, and it's under tonight's school committee date. Okay, good evening. We're live streaming as well as broadcasting on MCTV, and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the district website following this meeting. And at this point, I'd like to welcome any visitors in the audience. This would be the opportunity for public participation, which is Policy BEDH. But at this point, no one has indicated a wish to publicly participate remotely. But welcome. And if you are in the Zoom audience, please remember to keep your camera and microphone off until you are part of the conversation in the committee. Thank you. Okay, Brian, important events.
So the Hillcrest, I believe Gil held its kindergarten open house this evening. Hillcrest holds their open house and registration Thursday, March 30th at 5:00 PM. Just a reminder that there is a COVID and a flu and COVID vaccine clinic Friday, March 31st from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Montague Senior Center. I did want to highlight the Project 351 Clothing Drive, and I'll do so in my report. I did also want to invite people to consider attending the Turner's Falls High School production of Hairspray, which has shows on this coming Friday at 7:00 PM, Saturday at 2:00 and 7:00 PM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. Next Wednesday, April 5th, is an early release day for professional development. The Friends of Sheffield is holding a movie fundraiser on Saturday, April 15th at 9:00 AM at the Greenfield Garden Cinema. April Vacation is April 17th through the 21st. And Friends of Sheffield meet on Monday, April 24th at 6:00 o'clock in the Sheffield Teachers' Room.
Thank you. And do we have a student report tonight, Heather? Is Sina with us? Oh, thank you. Hi, Sina.
Hello. All right. I don't have a ton to talk about today. Things have kind of been slowing, and everyone's working hard on grades. We have MCAS going on with the 10th graders. The main thing that's coming up is hairspray. That is like this the week. Our opening night is on Friday. There's a show at 7:00 o'clock on Friday, and on Saturday, we have a 2:00 o'clock show and another 7:00 o'clock show. And then Sunday, there's another 2:00 o'clock show. So that's definitely something to be excited about. Um, the Student Council has definitely been talking a lot about Unity Day and Spring Conference, which we're hosting this year. We've just sent out a survey to all the students about Unity Day to see what people are interested in seeing. Tomorrow, we have a junior workshop where all the juniors are, they're not going to class, and we're learning about like different life skills, you know, and stuff to have like planning for like post-graduation, which will be very great. I think we have people from the bank coming in. I don't know which bank, but A Bank, they're coming in. And yeah, I think that'll be really valuable. Otherwise, we have prom coming up in May, but nothing happening like too soon. That's about it.
Okay, thank you. We always appreciate it when you fill us in.
Of course.
And Superintendent's Report, Brian.
And so if you opened it, it's a very brief report. I just wanted to congratulate middle school students Trinity Barry, Ray Juarbe, and Patrick Andrews on being selected as Great Falls Middle Schools ambassadors to Project 351. Their spring service project, the Clothing Drive, has been underway since March 20th and continues through this Friday. Please consider making a contribution to, at any of the schools. There are boxes located at each of the schools in the district. If you wish to donate some clean, used, or new clothing for those who are less fortunate. And I wanted to say thank you to all the staff, parent, and community volunteers who helped make last Thursday's Extravaganza event a success. In conversation with Mr. Barnes thereafter, we were, he had sent out invitations even to those families who are attending choice or charter schools but who live in our towns. And some of those families did come and check out the school. And more than one family had a conversation with him about being open to coming back to Turner's Falls High School, and that really is an important part of the reason why we hold the event. And I wanted to say thank you for, to Christopher and his staff for putting that together. Last Friday evening, the Friends of Sheffield hosted the Bingo for Books event at the school. The event was well-attended, and students and families had a really nice time. Thank you to the parent and community volunteers who organized and ran the event. Also for the donation of books they had for the book Vending Machine, and thank you to Nolan Plumbing and HVAC for sponsoring the event. The event, and just as a reminder, the next date when school committee will meet with students will be Friday, April 7th at 9:00, 10:00 AM remotely.
Any questions or comments for Brian? Okay, thank you very much. And yes, the Extravaganza was just wonderful. I will admit that. It was great. I was happy that I could stop in for a bit. Okay, moving on, we have the Business and Operations Report, Joanne.
Hey, new packet. I have a Treasurer's Report, and I also have our audit reports. So this is the fourth year in a row that we have had no findings on our audit. So that is good news. You can take a look at these and let us know if you have any questions. There's really not a whole lot to go over. There's our financial statements that show our, you know, post-retirement debt. That number is pretty significant. But that would be our retiree health insurance that we pay every year. And so while that number goes up slightly each year, we wouldn't put all the money aside and pay it all now to hold on to the money for a future expense. John?
You're muted, John.
When I looked at that section very briefly, I was really struck at the difference in liability depending upon what the interest rate may be. It's, am I correct if I, do I understand that correctly? That under one interest rate, the liability was 30 million, and under the long-term liability, many, many years. And then under another, it was 66 million or something. Is, am I understanding that correctly? That the interest rate has that much of an impact on the long-term liability?
Because we're, we're talking about like retiree health insurance, and so a retiree could be around for 40 years after they retire. And so that's 40 years worth of interest.
So that's a huge unknown, then.
It is. It absolutely is. Yep. And we look at that number every year when we do our budget. We look at our retiree health insurance and what that cost is, and we estimate that for you. So that is a budget line.
Is there any way to rationally plan for that? Is it's going to be a crapshoot anyway, isn't it, pretty much?
Well, we're not putting money aside, so that number is just saying in the future, that's what it's going to be. And we budget a little piece of that every single year in our budget. So we're not budgeting that, a larger number, a significantly larger number from one year to the next. We're just budgeting for this year's health insurance, the retirees.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I'm not sure where in the agenda is, but I also have a Treasurer's Report.
Actually, if we could vote it now during your report, that would be helpful.
Okay, so we received a couple of donations. One donation was to the Bordeaux Family Scholarship, and we received $20,000. That scholarship allows for us to give out one, two scholarships each year of $1,000. And so those funds have been put into the family scholarship that they already had in place. So it would be a vote to accept the $20,000 scholarship donation.
Okay, should we have two votes for the two different? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for the, to accept the donation for the scholarship fund.
I'll move that.
Nick, thank you. And second, Bill, thank you. We'll take a roll call vote for that. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And then the second part, Joanne?
Okay, and then we also had two donations from the Gil PTO. One of the donations is $1,440, and that's to support an after-school program at the Gil Elementary School. And the other donation is $1,684.64. I'm not exactly sure why it's that precise, but that is a donation toward Nature's Classroom Program.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for that as well.
I'll move it.
Bill, thank you.
I'll second.
And second, John. And we'll take a roll call vote on that as well. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
I feel I should disclose that I am a member of the Gil PTO. So my vote is yes, but if there's a conflict, I abstain.
Okay, I don't, don't think there would be, but if so, we'll just take you off the list. Thank you for telling us so. And John?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, thank you. And Joanne, I believe with the audit report, we generally just vote to accept it.
Yes.
And if that's okay, we could do that next time.
Sure.
Since that was quite a lot of information there to absorb at once.
I will include them in the packet again at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Can I just, can I just ask or clarify that their conclusion is really a blanket thing that, that without going into a deep dive, they don't see anything jumping out at them that's detrimental or off?
And that's right.
Okay.
Basically, it was an attaboy.
Right.
Good job.
And, and some years, quite a while ago, that was not always true. There were often, many years ago, there were findings, they call them, of issues that they wanted tightened up or done a little differently. So we, I think we've had no findings the last several, haven't we?
Four years. Yep, right, right. But we had had findings saying, you know, you need to tighten up your rules on purchasing. You need to tighten up your rules on cash handling. You need to tighten up your rules on payroll. I mean, every, everything.
Right, right. And I think there was a big change in student activity account handling some years ago because the rules were changed because in another part of the state, there were some issues that came about because of it. So Joanne, Joanne came out with a handbook and trained everybody that's handling those things on how to do it in the appropriate way.
Yeah, so the student activity audit happens at a different time. And so that is the only audit that we had some issues with. So we are still working on that. But these are our, our operating fund and grants and all of that. That's where these, these audits are about. And even like the large ESSER grants, our federal grants is included there, end-of-year operating report. So the only, the only one that is not current, because we only get it done every three years, is our student activity audit. But we had that about six months ago or so. We received that, and we talked.
Oh, yes, that's correct. That's right. Thank you for reminding us.
So we'll be doing an internal audit, and we'll be doing that soon. And we will bring the results of that to you as well. And that, the only one that we need to audit is the high school student activity account.
Right, right. And so we will vote, but we will vote on this audit report at the next regular meeting, if that's acceptable.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you. School Committee Reports is next. The warrant subcommittee approval, we have two accounts payable warrants, and if it's acceptable, we can vote them as a group. The first is fiscal year 23 warrant number 3339 dated March 29th, 2023 in the amount of $39,849.25. The second is also an AP warrant for fiscal year 23. It's number 3340, also dated March 29th in the amount of $161,973.32. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm all good.
Okay, I think I heard Bill and maybe Nick will be second. Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, so Bill and Nick, and we'll have a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the business section. I see we have Walter joining us this evening. Hi, Walter. We're going to talk about the Gil Sixth Grade Nature's Classroom, and I think I saw the teacher as well. Hi, Kristen. Okay, so you may take it.
This is my first year doing this, so please be patient. You should have received an approval form. It's a very thick packet. We tried to include as much information about Nature's Classroom this year as we could. Looking at it, the dates, we're looking at May 15th to the 19th. We'll leave on Monday. Kristen will go down with the students on the bus. I will follow down in my car. And then both of us will be down there for the week, partly because Nature's Classroom has two major rules. One of them is there always has to be two staff members with the children at all times. And then the second, there has to be a male overnight. We do not have any of the men at Gil except me, so I will be going with Kristen. I've done Nature's Classroom before, and so I'm looking forward to it. We have a great group of sixth graders this year. So that's what we're planning. We are about halfway, maybe two-thirds of the way through our fundraising. We have a few more events planned for the month of April, so we can make sure we raise enough funds so every child is able to go. You'll see in your packet the total amount and how much we've raised so far, and then what our plans are to raise the rest of the money before the end of April. So that's kind of giving a quick overview. If anyone has any questions, I know you've been through this many times. So you know that kind of the role that we have to do, but this is my first time, so feel free to ask questions. Or if you have something to ask Kristen, I know she wouldn't mind answering anything either, so.
Well, you already answered my first question for a field trip, which always is, has there been enough fundraising so that any student who's interested is able to go? And you've already answered that, so I'm very good with that. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions about the trip for Kristen or Walter? It looks very complete, and we've gotten it well in advance, which is very helpful.
Thank you also for including the connections and links to the Massachusetts State Frameworks in our own curriculum. These are great opportunities, and Walter, I do appreciate your willingness to join the trip as a chaperone.
The reason why I'm bringing my card, just in case, I do have to come back here. It's about an hour and three quarters. So if there is something that happens during the week, if I need to be called back to school for whatever reason during the day, I can quickly come back. But the plan is that I will be down there for the week, so.
Okay, anyone else have anything? I think everything is, is very well covered in your documentation. We really appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you both, Walter and Kristen, for joining us. And have a good time. I hope you have really good weather.
Fingers crossed. Hopefully, the Mayflies will stay out, they'll stay away for that week, then we won't have to deal with them.
Ideally, yes. Well, or you won't have snow or anything like we have lately. We could hope, right? All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
And we will need to, I will entertain a motion to approve the Gil Sixth Grade Nature's Classroom Field Trip. Nick moved it.
Seconded.
And Bill seconded it. Any other questions or discussion? We'll take a roll call vote for that. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Abstained.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. And we are going to skip the item B under Business. The new elementary school statement of ETS will be voted on at our next meeting.
Hey, Joseph, you have to, if you could shut off your, or mute yourself. The part of the reason I did leave it on the agenda was I just wanted to make the committee aware that despite the fact that we're very close to having a completed document, we need a little bit more time to do a little bit of cross-verification because there are questions that are answered in multiple places. And in the application, where the application is put, where the statement is entered, every time a question is answered, a new question pops up. And some of them are related to questions that were asked and answered earlier in the document. So I didn't want to put a document before school committee that was incomplete or potentially had mistakes because we just haven't had the opportunity to do that cross-verification to make sure that we have the same information in earlier questions, even though we have partially related questions that come later in the document. I will send out a PDF of what is going to be submitted to MSBA well in advance of the April 11th School Committee meeting, because as I said, the SOI is almost completed. And that will give the school committee an opportunity to have the item even before the agenda is posted and the actual item to be voted on is attached to the electronic version of the agenda. So it won't be too long before we'll send that out for, for your review. But we'll need to vote it on April 11th because the deadline for submission is on April 14th. So thank you, Jane.
Thank you. And we did get some information already, and I know it's a really lengthy document. It's quite, there's quite a lot to it, so we'll vote on it next time. The next item is approval of the retainer for the District Legal Counsel. We do need to vote that. And we need to know what the amount is, please.
Okay, it includes two amounts. The retainer is the same as it was last year. There's a monthly fee of $1,600 per month.
Okay.
And there is a rate in the agreement in case the retainer does not cover actions in this, in, you know, court, if they have to go to court on our behalf. That's, they do provide a fee in here. That's an hourly rate of $250 per hour.
Okay, but in other words, we are voting for the same retainer that we have paid the past year, and I think more than that.
Yeah.
Right, so it's the same as it's been.
Yes, the rate's have not changed.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the retainer for the District Legal Counsel.
So moved.
Heather, thank you. And Nick seconded. Any questions? In that case, we'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Next, under Business, addressing issues of equity. I believe that's Jean. Hi, Jean.
Good evening. All right, I'm going to share my screen. Get started. So some quick updates for you tonight on the issues for equity, the work we're doing across the district. So the first item, we've been discussing and talking about the work of the Culturally Responsive Practices Leadership Academy. And the work has been really invigorating, very eye-opening. And we've done a lot to look at not only the learning of the team related to culturally responsive practices, but also starting to dig into what it might look like to adjust our practices here in the district. So we've been using, it's called the Equity Planning Tool that the company we're working with uses, and we've selected one focus area for this year, which is development of staff around trauma-informed practices. So we kind of decided on certain things that we felt were, were areas of need related to culturally responsive practices and whittled it down to this area. So we're currently gathering data related to both staff understanding of trauma as well as student data, grade, attendance, et cetera. We're putting together a survey that's gone out to stakeholders about informed, trauma-informed practices and training. And so the goal is to gather all of that information and to develop a proposal for how do we address these gaps of equity and then create an implementation plan. And then ensure there's accountability and prepare communication. So we're in the process of still gathering the data, and we're going to bring it together at our next meeting to, you know, draft how can we improve trauma-informed practices at the staff level. The Elementary Social Emotional Learning Curriculum Committee has been working really hard to narrow down a selection of curriculum. So we've gotten to a place of three different curriculum that we're currently piloting, so Harmony SEL, Second Step, and Kindness in the Classroom. These are all linked to the website. So if you are looking at this document from the school committee agenda, you could, you could click the link and take a look at the overall program. It's their website. And so we use the CASL standards, which is looking at how different, different places recognize social emotional learning. And we've done looking at different, we looked at, really, we looked at like 50 different curricula. We kind of opened up the gamut here, and we narrowed it down based on some rubrics and then dug into about 15 that we really kind of looked at. And from that, we've got ourselves down to three. So different teachers at different grade levels are piloting lessons. They're going to provide feedback, and then the committee is going to come back together in late May to make a recommendation for the Elementary Social Emotional Learning Curriculum. And this would occur at all three elementary schools starting in the fall. So a lot of really good work, a lot of great thoughts and thinking around this. And I'm excited to see what the feedback is after teachers have piloted some of the lessons. And then kind of the last thing to talk about, issues of equity, our book study we did this year. It was really great. We had six groups running. We had administrators and faculty members both facilitating, so we had a number of faculty members step up to lead our book groups. We had 25 participants. The book, I believe I've mentioned this in a couple meetings before, but it's Culturally Responsive Teaching for Multilingual Learners, Tools for Equity. And so some takeaways from the book study, and you can see I just pulled a selection of some of the takeaways. You know, for example, some of the quotes, broader understanding and thinking about this, you know, thinking not just the students who receive ELL services. Why didn't their scope about planning and engaging with students and families? I don't have my own classroom. This is a para-comment, but engaging with multilingual learners in conversations more at lunch and recess. I have increased usage of pictures when talking about vocabulary. Started student profiles, have had conversations with other educators about creating family interviews. It's a big shift for, this person said this is a big shift for me, seeing students in an asset-based lens or light. And I've started to take steps to incorporate families in their child's goal setting. So at the end of the book study, we do a feedback survey. So how did it go? What are you taking away? What are your next steps? And then we also use one of the tools to ask staff, so this is 25 people, 25 staff members across the district. So it's a selection of folks who self-selected to be in this. But we then ask them to give us feedback as, as a district. So what are some areas they feel like we should focus on? And so these are some of the main areas we pulled from this. And so the administrative team will take a look at these and continue to use the feedback from this book study to grow and support our multilingual learners. So the first is clear communication. You know, what are the areas of need and strengths for our students? And increase signage around the buildings with various languages, both to help our students and our families. Increase access to resources. So, you know, an idea of creating, you know, getting library books of multilanguages. I do know at the middle and high school that Tabby Martinelli has done a good job to really build up a library in this, in this realm, but something to think about for classroom spaces at the elementary level and, and the library. Continue to build the skills and capacity of general education teachers to support multilingual learners. Review curriculum for equity and representation. So when looking at a new curriculum, does it, you know, does it have a representative? you know, doesn't have a representation of the students that we have in our district. Incorporate student and family surveys. So we gather more information about our learners and families and learn to pronounce student names correctly. So these were kind of whittled down the kind of main points that the 25 people in this in this book club said are things that this district can build upon and grow in. And the great part is that everyone from the book study also set their own intentional goal. So hopefully, not only do people have some really rich discussions and felt like they got some great learning, but that it's going to have a positive momentum in the district, both for individuals and the district as a whole. And that's all I have for today. Any questions?
Thank you, Jean. I just wanted to make note of I participated in the book study. I thought the text was excellent. And even better was having a teacher as a facilitator. Laura Brown did a remarkable job in facilitating a group that had two administrators in it. And I just thought that the conversations were very thoughtful there while there was some validation of things that are just good teaching practices. There were a ton of ideas exchanged. And I know that some people who have participated in the study may also be interested in continuing on with the work and doing perhaps some PLC work in the future to to integrate and build some of the plans that they got from ideas from that dialogue and from the reading. So thank you very much for bringing that opportunity to us.
Yeah, that's great to hear. Thanks.
I think your report says quite a lot. And so I take exception to saying that's all you had to say. It was quite a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And I was I am able to participate in the culturally responsive practices work and it's just amazing. It's just really so helpful. It's presented in such an educational manner to the group. It's I think there are five different school districts participating. And sometimes we're all meeting and sometimes it's just our school district, but and the the leaders that are giving the workshops and teaching the class are just really excellent at what they do. They're so insightful and and it makes it so accessible to the average person. I think the readings have been extremely helpful, too. Any other questions or comments for Jean? All right. Thank you again, Jean. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And next under business, the School Committee Subcommittee. Okay. We needed to put these on the agenda again because there have been some changes in the committee since we populated them previously. Jennifer Warrius has resigned from the School Committee and therefore there's a couple of vacancies. There's a vacancy on Unit A Negotiation Subcommittee and Unit C Negotiation Subcommittee. So if anyone is thinking they would like to join, Nick and I are on Unit A and John and I are on Unit C. We would be happy to have someone else if they would like to.
I'll do it.
Bill, are you offering for one or both?
I don't care. Whichever is easier.
Oh, I can't really say. From my perspective, I don't know.
What two was she on?
No, for right, for right now, I would do them both if nobody else wants it.
Okay, it's A and C. She was on both.
Well, Bill, I I'll take C if you don't mind.
Oh, that's great. I appreciate that and will, you know, let you know when the next meetings are there. There's one for a bit, I believe. And the other one that will need someone at some point in the future is Custodial and Food Service. Cassie was on that prior to her having to resign and we will not be negotiating with that group for a couple of years. So I think we're good for that for now. Otherwise, I think we're all set and I do appreciate the volunteers. It's really helpful. And so we'll let you know what the schedule is. Thank you both very much. Next item is the Six Town Regional Planning Board update. Anything Bill or Brian at this moment?
Yeah, sure. We had a meeting a week ago. And things are progressing. We comment, we talked about the high school students from each district visiting one another and engaging in conversation with our facilitator about their experience touring the other schools. That was seen as a positive that leads into the Six Town Group is planning to expand exposure of this whole concept. And the data related to it to school committees, we've already seen the present presentation. And then they want to deal with administrators and teachers, staff and the general public. And all of these would be gatherings with a forum, I guess you would call it with a facility with our facilitator and people on the committee to respond if needed. But mostly to get the information, which is the starting with the PowerPoint that we all observed. And then going from there. And I guess the big thing now is trying to, aside from getting more information out to the community. We're looking to be able to get feedback to help us determine how quickly we can make a recommendation either for or against this whole notion of re regionalizing two regions. And and that's not, we have another year. Plus, I think of grant. So but that would, most of that would hopefully be used after a recommendation. If it was positive or it would be returned if it was negative. Anyway, that's where we're at, trying to get more more input from the general community as well as specific groups within it. And John, you've got a hand up.
Yeah. So I, a couple of weeks ago, I looked at MCAS scores for the five high schools, the five authentic public high schools in Franklin County. Yeah. And the interesting score was for MCAS 10 in 2022. Gil Montague, the sum total of ELA and math was 1499. And the sum total of ELA and math for 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 Pioneer Valley was 1493. And I think it's also interesting to point out that Gil Montague has a poverty rate of 57%. And Pioneer Valley has a poverty rate of 36. And when I looked at the five high schools, Gil, Montague, Pioneer Valley, Frontier, Greenfield, Mohawk, and Maha. Our Gil Montague has the second highest poverty rate. But we also have the second highest combined MCAS score. The only authentic high school that didn't surpass Gil Montague was was Frontier at 1532. So I would say that's pretty good news in terms of the quality of program that that's being offered at at Gil Montague and the job that we're doing in helping the more socio economically stressed students.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for Bill? Thank you, Bill. And then when the forums are set, we can announce those at our meetings as well as I'm sure they'll be announced other places, too.
Yes.
Thank you. And we appreciate your work on this, your work on it. It's been a long time working on it.
That's true.
The truth is, Bill, I did kind of put my toe into it when I first got here. But it just seems such a local issue and so fraught. Someone from the outside, I don't know. That's why I kind of stayed away, but maybe if I.
All right, Brooke, Brooke showed up for our meeting the other day. It was her first representation there. And unfortunately, she's she wasn't sworn in yet to be on the committee, but she did participate. And she threw herself right into it. So I applaud her for that. Just as I expect she'll do for this committee.
Thank you. And thanks again. Discussion about remote in person School Committee Meetings. No specific news yet, correct, Brian?
Correct. We, the regional superintendents met and discussed what we felt like was not not really conflicting, but different information that we were getting from various legislative offices. And of course, the reason is that the House and the Senate have both have their own versions of extensions, as well as the the governor's budget also has versions of the extensions. However, all of that needs to be reconciled. So there is a possibility that it may not be reconciled by the time while they anticipate that it will be reconciled. It may not be reconciled in time to post the agenda for the April 11th meeting. So I just wanted to mention that people may need to be prepared to meet in person at the high school for the 11th. But as soon as we hear something from the legislature or from the governor's office or from MASC and some of the other organizations that that share the legislation, we'll let the committee know by forwarding the communication.
Thanks. Yes, we are aware they're working on it. And at some point, I I think there's been a large movement to continue to make options available for public committees that are meeting. So I know they are working on it. So we'll let you know when we know. Thank you. Discussion and appointment for the open Montague School Committee seat. I don't believe we have had any letters of interest and we now do have another open seat. So we have two open seats as of now and that moves us on to the next discussion item, which is School Committee Nomination Papers. Anyone interested in running for any of the School Committee positions is needs to pick up the papers from the Administrative Assistant, Brian's Administrative Assistant Tara. And I think those are available through tomorrow, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yes, we they need to be submitted to Tara by 4:00 PM tomorrow. For somebody to get on the ballot.
Okay. And if anyone is interested, there still is plenty of time. It only requires a small number of signatures of registered voters on the form before it's returned. So if if anyone out there is interested, you certainly would still have time to pick it up tomorrow and bring it back by the end of the day with enough signatures to be able to be on the ballot. And with that notwithstanding, if somebody decides after that that they'd like to run for one of the open seats, they certainly could run a write in campaign. Or people could write them in without their knowledge, which has sometimes happened as well. But and we have excellent members who have gotten on the committee that way. So it does work. And but, you know, I would like to put in a little plug. It's it's a great it's a great experience to work on School Committee. It's important work. The committee has really good discussions. We really think deeply about the issues and we really discuss it as a group and come to conclusions that seem really in the best interest of this, the students, the families in our district, and I'm continuously proud of our work. That little plug, I guess we'll do it. We have one more item. We need to approve the minutes for our March 7, 2023 meeting. And those are included in your packet this evening. And thanks to Tara, our new secretary, who's Secretary of the School Committee, as well as Administrative Assistant to Brian. We really appreciate it. And so I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Bill moved it and Heather seconded. And we will take a roll call vote.
I have one, one edit.
Okay, please.
In section four. Wait a minute. What am I looking for? I'm sorry, section six, C. I believe halfway through it's talking about whatever it's talking about. And it says respectively. And I think that that should be respectfully.
Oh, okay. That looks like a typo. Yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah. Okay.
That's it.
In that case, if it's if.
As amended.
Okay, thank you. If Bill moves it as amended and Heather seconds it as amended, that took care of that right there. Okay. Anything else anyone wants to comment on before we vote? Okay, in that case, to approve the amended minutes, we'll take a roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Thank you. Any agenda requests? Please get them to Bill, Brian, or myself. We generally meet the Tuesday of the week before the next School Committee Meeting. And the next scheduled meeting is April 11th. So we'll probably meet on the fourth to do agenda planning in the evening. We're meeting in April on the 11th and the 25th. Those are the next two regularly scheduled meetings. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Heather, thank you.
I'll second.
And second, John. And we'll take a roll call for those that as well. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Okay. In that case, we are done and thank you all very much.
Thanks.